Stretch break. Can make sure Aquila is back first here. I see her name here. Gonna make sure she's really there. All right. The guest of honor here tonight. All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 12th, 2020 Twolleton City Council meeting. Tonight, we have quite a few things to discuss, but we lead off with recognition of a departing employee, Aquila Herd Ravitch. This is very sad for most of us, both as counselors and staff. As many of you know, Aquila is very well respected and very well liked here in the community. With Counselor Heard of her departure to take care of her family, we were all stunned, but understand. But we want to take some time out to recognize her efforts. She's longtime employee. I'm sure Cheryl will cover some of her history. And then I'll have the counselors share any moments they will, if you want, or history or some comments. Before we let her go, she's here through, I believe, the middle of the month and so I'll be quiet now and over to Cheryl.
All right. Well, like you said, Mayor, this is bittersweet for me, mostly bitter, not very sweet. The proclamation that is in your packet that Counselor Morrison is going to re-express as many of my thoughts. But I want to call out a couple of things. So Aquila started here as a senior planner in 2007, and she's served in a number of roles, including interim Community Development Director between Doug Rucks and Alice Cannon a number of years ago. And then she was Planning Manager and then promoted to Community Development Director in April 2018. So whether as a department head or whether as a department member or a direct report, Aquila has always impressed me as a smart, thoughtful, diplomatic, curious, hardworking, flexible team player. She always does what needs to be done, even if it's hard. She's got a lot of grit. I've always been confident in Aquila's style. I've never worried that she would do something to embarrass the city or me. And she's always come through on that. The city has been extremely lucky to have Aquila working here on the many things that she's worked on over these years. She lives out our values every single day. And I just, from the bottom of my heart, wish her and her family all the best in this next chapter and feel really very proud of all that she's accomplished and touched over these years. So, thank you.
Yeah.
What I'll do is I'm gonna go round robin on counselors and then we'll have Counselor Morrison read your proclamation. But I want to go first, usually instead of going last. Gonna call dibs. And thank you very much, Aquila, for all the work you've done for the city. As a young city councilor, eight, what, 10 years ago? You taught me a lot over the years. And one of the biggest things I'm going to always remember is your work on the Basalt Creek Planning, a multi-year project we never thought was ever gonna end.
That's right.
Effort and questions and presentations and community events that you and I and all the other counselors attended. And how, like Cheryl was mentioning, you were always level-headed. You didn't lose it, where some of us sometimes did. And you kept both cities talking to each other, even though it got contentious at certain times, as we all know. But as Cheryl said, I think that showed your grit right there. And how good you are at your job and how respected you are, even from other cities. And I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the city and all the things you've taught me. We've had a lot of emails back and forth over the years where I'm like, what the hell's going on? What is this? And you answer it. Best wishes on your future. I'm very sad to be losing you because you're a key member of our team. But I totally understand why you're doing it. And hopefully, we'll see you again, maybe when COVID's over and there's a position, we can welcome you back. The best wishes. All right. And then I'll turn this over to, I guess Rank will have her privileges tonight, the Council President Grimes.
Thank you. You know, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. I can't even begin to imagine how many things that you have taught me and I am intensely grateful for all that you've done and all the times that you have patiently answered questions and patiently helped me understand of workings in the city, the workings of my own position on council. I can't tell you how many meetings I've been in or in council meetings when you've been there and you've been asked some incredibly long, complicated, multifaceted question, either by a member of the community or a developer or a development partner of ours where I wouldn't even know where to begin to even start to even tackle an answer. And you always had such an innate intelligence and grace and ability to take people's questions, find out the right information, make people heard, and really feel like you've given their questions and considerations a great deal of thought and a great deal of care when it came to answering them. And I'm just honored to have worked with you and I wish you every happiness in this next phase. And I join the mayor in my hope that at some point in the near future, God willing, COVID becomes under control and children go back to school and, you know, things do change. So please don't forget. I will miss you so much. And I feel like this is such a loss for the city, but at the same time, I really applaud the work that you've done for us. So I kind of, it is kind of a bittersweet, mostly bitter, but the sweet is all your work you're leaving behind and the roadmap for our success, especially in Basalt Creek. I mean, that's one heck of a legacy. So, thank you. I will miss you. And I wish you luck.
Thank you.
All right. I'll go to Counsel Brooks next.
Thank you, Mayor. And I mean, I have to echo what everyone else says, Aquila. It's interesting, coming on just two years ago, some of the things that I remember the most is when I first came on, not really understanding what your title meant and coming down to the city offices and you generously taking your time explaining things to me and having your department explain things to me and help me learn the complex, the complexity of what it, of all that you direct. And when I think about it, when I think about the amount of council presentations I've seen, just in my short tenure, you and your staff have been involved in a majority of that work. And I still don't fully understand your job description. And then all, you know, whether it's Steve or Garrett or all the other people in the department that come and represent to interface with community, to understand building, to understand where we are with codes, to understand so much of the complexity of how people and place intersect in with what you've done and what you do. Is, it takes somebody with a lot of intelligence to do that work, but it takes somebody with a lot of heart as well and dedication because it looks to me like a challenging job. It looks like a job a few people could do that one person's doing and doing so well. And the other thing I will say is echoing something like what Nancy said that, you know, there's challenging and sometimes contentious issues that come up, things that are confusing and have been even confusing to me. And you have just a way of stepping in, clarifying things and staying into really the facts of it and helping illuminate the complex, you know, all the little corners and crevices that that need to be understood well by us and the community and the people that we serve. So I know that I will see you in the community. I feel fortunate in that. And I'm looking forward to that. And I hope that we can stay in touch in that way. And I know that it's a loss for us as a city, but at the same time, during these times, it's, I'm glad for you and your family that you can make the choices that are good for you and that you have the ability to be able to do that. So thank you again. Oh, and one last final thing. I will say also, one thing I remember from going to our first advance was your warmth, having warm conversations with you and also your sense of style and beyond the Hawaiian shirts, but really, really.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bridgette. Counsel Reyes.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also, I mean, everyone's been saying what I've been thinking this, you know, when I think of you, you're just very, your integrity, your honesty and the way you deliver your message to us. Especially to me, sometimes I'm like, oh, my gosh, how does she know this stuff? How does she remember all this? And then, then you show us those maps and I'm like, where are we on that? And you're so graceful to tell us, this is where we are. This is where it is. This is where, and it's just, it's amazing, your patience and, and your grace to let us know how we can improve our jobs as city councilors. So thank you very much for all of that. Thank you. I do also recall the first time I met you and you showed us that those maps. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, what is all this? And you were so good in pointing out all the details and in the future of Twolleton. And I thought, I thought it was really very nice of you and eloquently explained to me. So thank you very much for your hard work. We will miss you and I hope that you come back and, and don't forget about us. So.
Thank you. Thanks.
Counsel Kellogg.
Thank you, Mayor. So in what seems like, you know, year nine of distance learning now, I don't know how you made it this far because honestly, it's just a nightmare. And we're all doing the best we can, but I'm really glad that you're going to be able to to focus on your kids and exchange the development code for the multiplication tables and all the fun things that we get to do with our kids. So I'll be brief, but I just wanted to tell you that, you know, I admire you so much. Your mastery of the details, your knowledge of the code, those are all great things. But what really impresses me about you is two things. One, your willingness to listen to novel, if not bizarre, ideas for me on the southwest corridor about different things we ought to try and, you know, pretty much redefining the entire scope of their projects out the tiger and they went along with it. And the second thing is your unflappability and willingness to speak out. I'll never forget, you and Jonathan and I went to that meeting in Gresham for the opportunity zones and none of us knew what we were getting into or really what we were even talking about. And they're doing all this statistical analysis. And, you know, we were there to tell them we had opportunity zones, but there was no place in the conversation to stand up and say that until you just stood up and said, I'm from Twolleton and we have two opportunities. People start coming over our table, but, you know, it was just a flash in a moment that was needed and you filled the gap. So your courage and those things are going to serve you well, no matter what you do in the future. And of course, we're going to miss you tremendously. Thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel Morrison.
Yeah, I have known Aquila. I first ran into her in the fall of 2011. And it was a project. And then again, there was another project and then it's another project. And it just seemed like I was constantly running into Aquila at all these meetings. I then knew the reason why I just so appreciated everything she did. My wife and I were at Whole Foods one time. I was on council back then and in walks Aquila wearing her Dodger hat. And if you don't know me, I'm a long time diehard Dodger fan. And I'm being, I'm being true to the council. I do not have the Dodger game on in the background. I am getting updates periodically from my son who is letting me know what's going on. Aquila, I have said this repeatedly. I said this when I first ran for council in 2016, that I was running because I wanted to continue working with staff. And you're one of those shining stars on the staff that I really appreciated working with for all those years when I was just trying to do what was right for homeowners association, just trying to do what was right for the IBOC CIO. And the joy and pleasure of being able, not only to work with you, but to sit in meetings and have you so patiently explain for literally the hundredth time to somebody and patiently and politely and usually with a nice smile on your face and not just being a tremendous individual and a tremendous person. It's what makes it a joy to work with you. And I, too, I'm listening. I have three kids in high school. I understand the intense, it's bad. By the way, it gets worse when they get in high school.
Thank you.
People always kept telling me it gets better. They didn't realize I've already had older kids and I knew it didn't get better. I know I've done this before, unfortunately, but but I appreciate everything that you're doing for you and for your family and bless you for that. And I too will welcome you back at some point in time because I know that eventually this, this too will pass and we will be able to move forward with our lives and with our careers. And your career certainly is just at the beginning of what will be a great, a great career for you. And again, can't say enough about being able to work with you. But also, and I'm just going to give a shout out on your leadership skills because I think we're going to mention that in the, in the resolution. The people that you have hired have been just absolutely amazing and outstanding to work with as well. And that to me is, it's beyond the, the whole thing of what a great person you are, but what a great leader you are and your ability to get your message of what the city means, what the city is, down to your employees. And for them to carry that torch is, again, just an outstanding sign of leadership. And I commend you for that as well. And with that, Mayor, would you like, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's, I'll put you at the end so you can do your proclamation.
That's what I figured. And I have to tell you, I was quick to raise my hand because I was, I've always been honored to, to know you, Aquila, and to work with you. And so it is also my honor to read a proclamation commending Aquila Herd Ravitch on her service to Twolleton. Whereas Aquila Herd Ravitch began her employment with the City of Twolleton on September 12th, 2007, as a senior planner. She was promoted to Planning Manager in April 2011 and was again promoted to Community Development Director, where she has served since April 2018. And whereas Aquila has worked on a broad and diverse set of projects in her 13 years with the city, including Twolleton Tomorrow, the Transportation System Plan Update, Urban Renewal, Chickens, Cannabis, Signs, Noise, Basalt Creek, Stafford, Southwest Corridor, Twolton 2040, and much, much more. And whereas Aquila has dealt with many personalities and characters in her 13 years and has always maintained her composure and poise, representing the City of Twolleton exceptionally well in all her dealings. And whereas literally hundreds of complex land use actions have come across Aquila's desk, resulting in thousands of hours in front of the Architectural Review Board, the Planning Commission, and the City Council, Aquila has made countless presentations to community groups, stakeholder committees, and advisory boards, always with a positive attitude and demeanor, even when some went into the wee hours of the morning. And whereas Aquila is well-respected throughout the region for her skills, expertise, and dedication. As a longtime member of the American Planning Association and Northwest Women's Leadership Academy, she has provided mentorship and leadership to younger professionals and women in the community development world. As a manager, her value is to always put people first. She strives for progress and high-quality work, but always balanced with the relational impact on her team and in the community. And whereas even though Aquila has carried a heavy workload in Twolton, she always had time to share a laugh and a personal touch. She will be greatly missed. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Twolton, Oregon, that Aquila Herd Ravitch is commended and applauded for her service and significant contributions to the City of Twolton, introduced and adopted this 12th day of October, 2020.
All right, Aquila, now it's your turn.
Okay, thank you. Wow. Thank, thank, thank you everybody so much. It's, it's really amazing to hear all your words. And I love that proclamation. They're always fun. You know, so as the council, you guys have just a tremendous job. And I, I admire you for volunteering for this. We sit through the same meetings and you're there as volunteers. I'm there as staff. And so I've always just really admired your commitment to the community and to public service and to the community members for doing that. And so that's, you know, that's why I take the time to explain things. I do this every day. I've been doing it for a long time. You guys have to focus on so many different things in a single night. And so do people in the community. And when they show up to a meeting, it's because they're interested, but they've had a busy day and, you know, they deserve a respectable conversation and to have their questions answered. So, and I appreciate people who do that or take time out of their day to, after they've had a long day to go, go to a meeting at night. So that's, that's where I've come from and how I've been able to like carry out that demeanor because it's genuine. I appreciate what people are doing there. And it's just been, what an amazing ride it's been being in Twolton. And when I got here, there was a lot more vacant land. And I came from, I had worked for City of Torrance in Southern California. There was no vacant land. And so when I got up here, I was a little bit shocked. It's like, wow, this is going to be a new experience. So I've seen a lot of growth and development. And, you know, most of all, I've worked with some really incredible people over the years. And right now, just I have an amazing team. So I, I know some of you mentioned like loss to the city, but you have incredibly strong staff working for you, very highly intelligent, creative, just workers, you know, movers who will get stuff done. And so I am, I feel very good that I'm leaving you in very good hands, not just in community development, but that's what I could contribute with the rest of the city as well. So I, yeah, I can't say enough about my team. They're just an amazing group of people. And we've, we've done a lot of amazing stuff in the two years. I have to say a big shout out and thank you to Cheryl. I feel like I don't know if I would have been here if she hadn't kind of given me a little bit of a push or a kick of like, you can do this. So so I, I'm very grateful for that, even as becoming Planning Manager and, and becoming Community Development Director, like that she, she's been huge and a very supportive, very supportive boss. And I truly appreciate that. And the entire exec team has, has always been very supportive of me in my position. And so yeah, thank you guys so much. Yeah, it's what crazy times we're in, you know, 2020. It just keeps on giving. So thank you. Thanks, everybody so much.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna do another one more round of clapping. Thank you. Thank you very much for everything you've done. You will not be forgotten. We, like I said, we all appreciate what you've done. And, you know, that's appropriate with this PTA tonight in Basalt Creek. We should get to see all those years of effort moving, you know, moving forward. All right. Well, thank you, Aquila. All right. So moving on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there is anyone in this Zoom meeting who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Do we have anyone at the poll center or in the meeting that we are aware of who wants to make comments?
No, Mayor. There's no one at the poll center and no one in the meeting for this portion.
All right. Thank you. That brings us on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, those items considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Consent agenda tonight consists of four items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the city council work session in regular meeting minutes of September 28th, 2020. Consideration of Resolution Number 5522-20, authorizing changes to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 adopted budget. Item number three, consideration of Resolution Number 5523-20, adopting the City of Twolton Investment Policy. And finally, item number four, consideration of Resolution Number 5524-20, authorizing the city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice and Department of Treasury to receive a share of forfeiture proceeds. Are any of these items requested be removed from consent tonight? You see no hands.
Motion to approve consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any comments or, whoa, my computer almost went to sleep here. I think it just did. All right. Just woke it up. Any discussion on the motions? All right. I'll circle around here. Counsel Brooks.
Hi.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Kellogg.
Hi.
Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Hi.
And the mayor also votes yes. All right. Special reports. We have an update on our economic recovery program, and I believe that's Jonathan Taylor. Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jonathan Taylor. And I am the Economic Development Manager for the City of Twolton. Tonight, we're going to give a brief update on the economic recovery plan that you, as council, adopted on August 10th. Just real quick of where we're at, you identified three areas of funding. You did an economic stabilization fund. You allocated funds for a childcare scholarship and we have reserved a few hundred thousand for future disbursements. And where are money at, where those funds have originated? So of all of our sources of funding, we received $278,000 from Business Oregon. We do have a November 15th deadline for those expenditures. Of that, we have awarded $10,000 and it is restricted to businesses. $252,000 was a reimbursement for our first round of economic stabilization fund. Real quick, there's no restrictions, but it must be economic development slash urban renewal related. And we also received $680,000 from Washington County through the childcare, excuse me, Washington County Small Business Cares Funding Grant Program. And real quick, that also has a November 15th deadline. So where are we at? On August 10th, you allocated $600,000 to the Economic Stabilization Fund. One pot of it coming from cares funding and the other pot coming from Business Oregon. And the way that we implemented the round two is we took both of these and combined them into one application for ease of use for our businesses. We allocated $332,000 from CARES Act. Of that, we have dispersed $208,000. We awarded 43 applicants so far and the average grant is $6,900. Business Oregon presents its own particular, unique challenge, and I'll get into that in just a second, but we have $278,000. But we have $278,000. We have dispersed 10,000 of that and those have went to three applicants with the average grant of 2,500. With the Business Oregon contract, we have a round one and a round three. In July, council approved $35,000 for that first grant that we received from Business Oregon, which was called round one. That grant specifically precluded any applicant who has ever received federal CARES Act, whether that be paycheck protection, emergency economic disaster loan, or any other type of CARES Act funding. So no business who received that could qualify for that 35,000. The additional $260,000 that we received in September that we readjusted our contract for allows businesses who have received that, but it's less the amount minus the grant. So for example, if a business received $5,000 in paycheck protection, but they qualified for $5,000 from the grant, it's a net negative. So no dispersments can be made. If they receive six, excuse me, 4,000 from paycheck protection, but they qualified for 5,000 from this particular grant program, they could receive $1,000. We are not the only community that's having trouble dispersing these funds. And I think most of you have heard those similar stories. Sherwood is having trouble. Tigerd has had trouble. And in addition to those, our other communities are also having trouble distributing grants to their businesses. They're having to go out multiple rounds in order to draw down on the fund. For the childcare scholarships, there was $250,000 allocated to the program. We only received four applications and one of those was eligible. And that average, that grant award was $1,300. And I'll be honest with you, council, I am very surprised with this one because we did massive outreach through our childcare facilities as well as our diversity task force notifying those community groups that would benefit from this. I did a little bit of digging to provide a little bit more context. And even though it's not directly related to this particular program, Community Action received $8 million from Washington County for rent assistance. And I'm trying to draw a comparable of why we think some things are not happening. They still have $3 million left to assist. So all these groups are having trouble. I don't know whether connecting to groups. Are people becoming application fatigued? Is it too complicated? I really don't know the answer to that one. And then finally, future dispersments, and this is where we're kind of starting to butt up against a deadline. You dedicated $360,000 in, on August 10th. With the remaining amount of what was allocated with the leftover amount of round one, we have about $149,000 that have still been allocated. In addition, what's left of the childcare scholarships is 248,000 will have to be dedicated to another round of childcare scholarships for business grants. We still have a November 15th deadline. And then the 250,000, $252,000 that we've received as a reimbursement can be spent at any time. So there is no deadline. So we have a little bit of leeway with that one. So we were talking internally amongst staff of looking at a, a late winter grant dispersment or seeing what else we could do with that regarding business development, urban renewal, et cetera. So I'm going to pause here for just questions because the overall question to council tonight is to utilize these funds by the deadline of November 15th. Does council approve of staff administratively moving funds between business assistance programs and the childcare scholarships based on applied need or vice versa?
I'm just waiting for people to pop back on the screen here. Right. So questions, comments for Jonathan so far. Bridget.
Thanks for the update, Jonathan, and thanks for all the work. I, I have to say, I've mentioned your name often when I do the round tables at the committees I go to because I'm very proud of the work that you've done on behalf of our community and our business community in these particularly difficult times. As far as the business grants that are difficult to disperse, with other areas having difficulties as well, have there been any solutions that have been identified that are helping people move that forward?
Yeah. Good question, counselor. So what we intend to do is we, we've talked with our other counterparts that have to do, that have had to do multiple rounds in order to do this. We're going to make the application even more simple and we're going to put it back online. So our original approach, because we all agreed internally that we knew that businesses were getting grant fatigued and they're getting tired of constantly filling out applications. So what we tried to do, because we're, because state of Oregon is a little, well, is more restrictive with what they require. We combined the applications and hoping that if we did it administratively, that people would just apply and we could just sort through it. I got feedback and that was not the preferred method. And they understood why we did it, but what we're going to do now is we're going to break up those two programs and focus Business Oregon and also focus on our own, but putting that back online and making it a 10 question again, like we did the first round. And what we do know from the first round, that within the first 24 hours, we, we received 100 applications. So we're also going to advertise, we're going to do a broad, we're going to advertise into all its life about both programs, but we're also going to advertise on Pamplin Media just to kind of get the word out. And we're going to still do mass, but we're also going to make it simple for a grant dispersment like the first round.
And then I guess my follow-up question, hearing that, are the grants for the childcare scholarships, I had two questions on that. One was, are we dispersing that through the schools? That information through the schools for school age kids? And my other question was about the ease of filling out those forms. I mean, I have to say, and I'm just going to say it, you know, as a social worker, uh, doing grants either for, at an organizational level or at a smaller level is something that I have had the privilege of helping people in organizations do. And it's because it is complicated. It's because it's a chore. It's work that people get paid for, as you know. But just to say to the community and then it's, it can be complex and intimidating. So those are the things that come up for me, especially around the childcare grant. Although maybe some of these businesses could use a social worker too. And so that was my second question. Thanks.
I'm sorry, counselor, could you?
Oh, my first, my, my first question is, is the information about the childcare grants going through the schools? And my second question was, how simple are those grants for people to fill out?
Oh, good questions, counselor. So on the school question, we did not do that in the first round. We decided originally that we were going to go through the childcare facilities themselves because we thought that they would have expanded access. In this next phase, we are definitely going to cover all of our bases. We'll be sending it to the school administrators. We'll be sending it again to our childcare facilities. And we'll still also do that expanded outreach through community advertisements, diversity task force. The ease of application, because we have to ensure that the grant funding is going to an emergency childcare facility by a state of Oregon executive order, the application right now is only two pages. One page is for the household and one page is for the facility. So working with Sherilyn and Dawn and Aquila, we really pared that down to, I think, the bare minimum. So, and we may put that one back up as a, a fillable PDF online.
Now I guess I had one follow-up question too with as far as reaching out. Just because I know like working with the police foundation, sometimes it's harder to identify kids in need right now. We know that reporting is down. And I don't know if there's ways that we also are involved with families who might be court involved, if there's information that can go out through those systems as well. Just curious about that.
Council Reyes.
Yeah, I'm really surprised to hear that the childcare grant was not what we, I guess, projected. In this round that you're going to do second, the second round, one thing that worked for me when I was before, during the time that early closures of the, of COVID, I think it was April, whenever we had the, the city, the Twolton city decided to give 100, was it 200,000 or something like that? I, I printed out the applications myself and I went, I dropped them off like on my Asia, the, the nail polish pay place at the local places, just because I felt like there's no way they're going to go to the website, fill something up and then save it and then attach it and send it in. I mean, I already know that they're, that's, they'd rather see it printed in piece of paper and they fill it out with their handwriting and then drop it off wherever they need to drop it off. So that worked out for me with all these little businesses that I was going to and dropping off applications. Some of them, I think you're right, they were this time, the second time that I, those who I know did not get funded that first time. They just got discouraged and they just, it's, it's a lot of work for them to try to explain their business and why they need the funding, especially their second language. And I know you say they can record it, they can do this. It's really not that easy as we think it is. So I feel like sometimes when we send people to the website, especially people with English as a second language, they might speak a little bit to communicate with you, understand a little bit as you, you talk to them, but they don't really know how to put something in writing that would, uh, you know, help them. And, and I think that's, that was, that was what I experienced and I, I honestly, Jonathan, felt a little discouraged too. Cause it's like, I'm not going to do this. I went and I dropped off all this and then I noticed who got funded and I was like, ah, all right. You know, not that I don't, I want, I will do it again and encourage them, but I felt like it's hard for them. I mean, um, so if you print, that's what worked out for me. Print it out. I, I went and I printed out the application. I took it to them. I gave them your number. I give them your information to say, contact this guy. He's going to help you fill this out. And that's, that's basically what I did. I didn't send them to any website or anything like that because I know they're not going to do it. It's just too much for them to comprehend how to even type in twolton.gov and navigate the whole thing. So I'm just, I'm, I mean, I know we don't have, like, we want to empower people, but I think sometimes you have, you have to hold their hand first before they go ahead and send them on their own and you know, and, and so that's, that's what worked out for me. So I'm, I'm surprised that a lot of the families that I know did not take advantage of the, or go to these facilities to try to apply for, for the childcare support that's out there for them. So I'm really, I hope that the next time it really gets to them, the message is really clear and that we can help them out. That was, that's just my comment based on my experience on the first time we did, we tried to do this and I was a little bit more involved. But I think that's how I'm going to get involved more because I feel like there is a lot of need on that and, and I want to spread the word. So I'm going to try to start, start spreading the word again about childcare.
And to your point, Counsel Reyes, uh, we also during the three weeks that we had both applications open, we had two weeks of the fire hazard. So there was a lot of, I do know that two individuals that wanted to apply for the childcare scholarships, their school and childcare providers closed down during that time because they didn't have a necessary HVAC system. And so they didn't know about it. Luckily I told them that we are going to do this again. We just have to get our feet back under us. So I, I, I'm with you on that one. We are definitely going to do a little bit more door-to-door print-offs, but at least hand out the flyers of what they need to do. And this is available. Now the childcare scholarships will be a, a tricky one with that kind of outreach because I don't know exactly where we would actually do those. Unless we do what Counsel Brooks said and really target the schools through an email blast.
Yeah, I like that idea that Counsel Brooks brought and also like the, for instance, the free clinic, the food pantry. Like you know how they usually put in stuff for information, like stuff that are happening in the community? I think that might, that might draw a little bit more attention to, to these kinds of services. I don't know, just ideas of how do we disperse this information for, for the community to take advantage of them.
Other questions, comments?
Oh, Counsel Kellogg. Yeah, um, thank you, mayor. Who knew it'd be so hard to give away money? So Jonathan, just to, with respect to your prompt about, you know, moving funds between, uh, yeah, I say do whatever you can do because it's, you know, it's a use it or lose it, uh, funding source. And, and so, you know, all the excellent suggestions from Counsel Brooks, Counsel Reyes. I know you're working hard to, to try to give it away and I just wish you more success and for anybody out there listening that needs help, reach out.
Jonathan, is there, considering the difficulty multiple jurisdictions are having given away the Business Oregon money? Has Business Oregon been asked to rethink their criteria? Has any, are they flexible? Will they move or are they, this is set in concrete and are not willing to change their requirements?
So ourselves, Beaverton and Hillsboro sent a message to Representative Prusak's office stating some of our difficulties. The, the executive committee of Business Oregon, which is comprised of legislatures and appointees have not given the budge on retooling this particular grant. When we return it, we have to return it, it will go back to the legislature for them to determine what to do. So we're hoping that when and if this, these monies go back, that they kind of regroup and redistribute that money back. But we've told those businesses to contact the representatives who we had to say no to. And just because they awarded the money, mayor, doesn't mean they actually withdrew it. It's the paycheck protection is a loan that they could either withdraw or not. So it's really confusing. Uh, two of our jurisdictions in the area asked, along with us, asked for the extension and then one has given the money back. But I, I'm with you on this one, mayor. We're going to try to distribute that money as quickly as possible.
But given the time constraint, November 15th, in your, in your crystal ball, if is there, how would I put this right way? Then the next call that Governor Brown has with mayors, is this something I bring up and ask, can you change this like PDQ or is it too late?
I, I would say that it would be your prerogative to bring this up to the, to the governor.
Well, okay. Well, is it going to move the needle? That's the thing. If like, you know, the next call by November 15th, and that's only a month away. Or is it just a matter of hammering the governor and you're like you're saying, the representative? So when this money does go back to the legislature, um, what's your plan going to be to redistribute it?
I think both would be an excellent position because I do know that Mayor Galloway was going to do the same.
Okay. Thank you.
My bet is that, that the mayors, you know, in your, in your network, they're all dealing with this. I mean, every, every city that we know of is dealing with this. So I would bet that you would find sympathetic ears.
Is LOC aware of this issue? As far as you know?
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I haven't heard it raised.
Okay. I'll shoot something to my colleague and see if he's got, you know, more time and the LOC behind him. But he can probably move mountains if we, more than I can at this point, but we'll see what he has to say. All right. Counsel Brooks.
I think if they do change the requirements, the other thing would also be mentioning the deadline in moving that as well. Just not to leave it off. I have, I have mixed feelings about mixing the pots of money, I have to say, especially from children to businesses. I feel like we've done a lot for businesses. And my other thoughts, and I'm, I'm concerned, especially with some of the things that you mentioned around the fires and just people responding, the low response rates, that it's not about the need, that it's about something else. And so I have concerns about that. And then my other thought, and I'm not trying to add, because I know it's a short timeline, but we did talk about that basic needs stuff as well. So that we kind of, I forget how it went, Mayor, we bounced it to the, the county. But I, I'm just really concerned about, I'm very concerned about business needs, of course, and I'm also very concerned about residents' needs and I'm, I'm wanting to really balance that when I think about this.
Others? So getting back, Counsel Morrison.
Sorry, real quick, I just wanna weigh in on the question that was asked by Jonathan. And I, I would tend to echo Counsel Kellogg's comments. It's surprising how hard it is to get rid of money. I'm, I'm concerned about the childcare funds, about how we got the word out and whether we are, as Counselor Brooks has suggested, where we're integrated well enough with all the schools here in Tuolton. That said, I am aware that the Tiger Tuolton School District had openings for their, they had two hundred open slots and they were having an extremely difficult time filling them, for, I mean, for whatever reason. And I'm not even gonna try to surmise what it was, what those reasons would be. But I would echo the thoughts of Counsel Kellogg, that if we need to move the money around, move the money around rather than lose it. And also, you know, I think we set that money up at two fifty from the original. And Jonathan, I don't, and it, it's not important what the original amount was, but it was significantly less, if I remember correctly, because we really felt that need was gonna be overwhelming and would overwhelm the system. Clearly, that's not the case. And so to that extent, if, if there is a place where we can find the need, where someone's actually willing and meets the criteria to fill out the paperwork, then by all means, let's figure out a way to make it happen. That would be my two cents worth.
Other comments? Just like Paul and Robert, I'm fine with counsel, I'm sorry, with staff having a little bit of flexibility to move the money back and forth based on demand and the applications coming in and, you know, increased outreach. Because, yeah, I, I'd rather get the money out to our folks here in town than have it go back to the state and the money gets diverted to another community. So I wanted to have it, you know, placed here with our residents and our businesses rather than, you know, someplace else in Oregon. So anything you guys can do to get the word out, get the, simplify the application process, handholding, you know, as Maria, I think that's a brilliant idea, getting some printed applications at the free clinic, at food pantry, where they fill boxes, they stick one in there. But I'm, I'm fine with giving staff that flexibility. What about other counselors that haven't spoken yet?
Well, I, I concur. I, I don't wanna lose any of the money and I'm happy to move it around in order to keep it in the community. But I do think, and this kind of dovetails, I think, onto what Counsel Brooks was saying, you know, I think part of the slow uptake this time could be so many different things, including the mayhem that came from the fires that we had and just basic overload and conflicting pieces of information that you hear in the news any given day. Yeah, if we can just continue to try to get the word out there, you know, if we can create and supply a decent amount of, you know, printed materials, it would be great, even if we could put them in the bags for people that pick up their things that they reserve at the library, when you're giving your bags, like put a flyer in there. It's not too late to put a flyer in utility billing, it might be for that. If we could get an ad to put into Tuolton Life, I mean, I'm just trying to think of anything that, like in the next two weeks, more or less, we would need to get in front of people to give them enough time to get the changes made. And have we reached out to all of the different daycare centers that are already in Tuolton to let the directors of the centers know that the money is available for scholarships? And did we talk to the schools about like the Club K before-school and after-school program? To let them know we had scholarships?
So yes, Counsel, are we?
We did, okay.
But we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna definitely double down on that again.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I mean, you've done a great job trying to get the word out. It's just, it's a crazy time. And yeah, to think that we have to press so hard to be able to give our community funds is really sort of mind-boggling.
Counsel Reyes?
Yeah, I think that if we can try a little bit more to, to spread the word, that's, that would be great. I am also in favor of moving funds around if we need to, to businesses that are waiting to, to also be funded. I mean, it's, it's also not fair to have them wait when, you know, we're trying our best to, to help our families first. And I, I, I'd like to do that. I'd like to help the families kind of spread the word and try it one more time and, and, and see how we can get the, the families to understand. One of the things that I was thinking, maybe use some of the, 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 like, metro groups, you know, like groups that are like, that can identify other groups, subgroups within Tuolton and, and send it to their representative or whoever's in. I don't know how, how that, how those groups work, because I was never part of anything like that growing up. But if there's like a metro president, student president that can, we can send out that information to and they can send it to their subgroups. Or, you know, just, just things like, just so we can try at least one more time to spread the word. And then, but yeah, I'm also in favor of, of moving funds around if we need to, to help our, our businesses as well that are providing jobs. So.
I think just, I think you said it already, Jonathan, if you can, as we said, simplify the application and then you mentioned before, application fatigue, that, you know, as a business, responding to RFPs all the time, you're always sitting going, is this really worth my time? That you somehow assure folks that, you know, if you meet the qualifications, you filled the application correctly, odds are, you know, you might, you will get money. So it is worth your time versus being a waste of time. So a simplified application process and letting people know that if you do meet the criteria and you fill it out correctly, odds are, you, you will get an award, will probably motivate more people than, you know, this is my fourth time trying at this. I've lost three, you know, I didn't get three times before, so why bother? Just reinvigorating people, if you will, to apply, because this time, you know, we're at the point where we, we gotta give it away and we're having a hard time giving it away. So you have a pretty good shot at it. If you do everything right and dot your i's, cross your t's, you probably will get the money. So it sounds like, go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah, I, this is one of those like Captain Obvious questions, but I'll ask it anyway. And does the Chamber have any suggestions for us or any? I mean, I'm sure that they're willing to go out and send out yet, you know, another round of emails and things to their members and everything. But I'm just wondering, in addition to doing that, if Linda or anybody had some suggestions for us about how to really get some of the business people's attention in the city about this additional grant?
So Linda at the Chamber, along with the BRC, has done an amazing job in helping us where we're at now. That we'll definitely retouch base with her on, hey, this is what, this is what has happened. Do you have any suggestions moving forward?
I just suggest all of us who do social media is get the word out there and ask people to file an application, you know, as easy as we can make it for them, you know, pointing towards where the application is and give out Jonathan's email and phone number. Or, I know for those businesses, and you'll send them to the Chamber, the BRC, that's the BRC's job to help with this. So not to overwhelm Jonathan, but send them to the Chamber. They can pop in there, make an appointment with the folks at the BRC and I'll even walk them through filling out the application.
Yes, one more question?
Sure.
You know, I, I, I like a lot what you said, Mayor. I like money is available now, things like that, so that people know that they're not just filling out forms, they're not gonna get anything. And then, as I recall, too, this money's for working parents as well. So dovetailing the messages to our, our working parents and our businesses around the childcare funds, I think is important. And my other thing with that, with the easy to fill out forms, handwritten forms, like just having them places like even Fred Meyer's, I think of places that families are where places that are open in our community and working with businesses like that for lifting up that money available to families right now to help with childcare that's affecting just so many different levels of families in our community. And with all the mixed messaging with the schools and everything like that, I think it's, people might be more figured out where they're sitting right now, if, if they are in need of childcare, even just for, you know, if they just need a break. I know a lot of people are staying home twenty-four, seven with their kids and they don't get a, they're working on the computer, they're working with their kids on their breaks, they never get a break. And to even take, you know, take that money and utilize it for childcare, to get a break and schedule a break in your life, you know, if people are listening out there, really think about it, especially people that aren't used to filling out forms and taking money. A lot of times people think there's a catch. And in this case, it's really just relief that is available, that people put in their tax dollars for. So it's your money. And I just wanna remind people that, because sometimes people, there's a pride and a fear of being a drain. And we really want this money to go to our community.
All right. So you have the direction you need, Jonathan?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. So moving on to public hearings, next on the agenda is Plan Text Amendment twenty dash zero, 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 three. This hearing was originally held on August tenth and they continue to a date certain of September twenty eighth. At the September twenty eighth hearing, the council continued the matter again to a date certain of tonight. The applicant has submitted an amended proposal, which is in the packet, and this is what we'll be considering tonight. The record remained open from the last hearing date. We will now continue to hear the hearing to consider the applicant's PTA proposal. The council will first hear from the city staff, followed by the applicant. Next, we will hear public testimony from those in favor of the PTA, followed by public testimony from those opposing the PTA. Upon conclusion of the public testimony, council may ask questions of staff, the applicant, or any person who testified. We will now hear from city staff. Oh, is that Steve? There's Steve.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Bubinik. Members of City Council, good evening. Steve Cooper, Planning Manager. We don't have a formal presentation for you this evening. We believe that the draft proposal in your packet for this PTA represents the council direction from the September twenty eighth public hearing. We'd be happy to answer any questions. And I think we would just note that we believe further that the ordinance fourteen forty-four dash twenty, which you have and may consider under general business at the conclusion of this hearing, also represents that direction. And so again, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have either now or following any public testimony, if there's anyone out there.
Anyone have any burning questions for Steve at this point? All right. So we'll hear from the applicant, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Michael Robinson. My, well, you have my mailing address. You now will find me. I think I only need to say two things. And I, first of all, thank you very much, not only for the council's time and willingness to discuss the matter with us last meeting, but also Steve and Sean, who spent more than a couple of hours over the intervening time between September twenty eighth and tonight work on an ordinance that met council's direction. So the applicant certainly agree with it. We, we appreciate what's in your packet tonight. And we would ask that you approve it, hopefully in both readings tonight, Mayor, so we don't have to come back in two weeks. We're all here to answer your questions, if you have any, but thank you again for your time tonight.
All right. So do we have anyone in the Zoom meeting wishing to testify in support of the PTA from the general public? Have anyone there in the poll center in the meeting?
No, Mayor, there's nobody at the poll center. And I don't see any hands raised in the Zoom audience.
Right. So on the flip side, do we have anyone in the poll center in the Zoom meeting who wishes to testify in opposition to PTA?
Hi, this is Dan Cobb. I don't see the little button to raise my hand. I apologize.
Go ahead, Mr. Cobb.
Hey, hi. Thank you, Mayor and, and the council. I'm gonna try to be a little more civil in terms of my greetings to you this time around. I was last time, but I wasn't formal. So this is formal. So would it be possible for you folks to summarize for some people here, summarize the Plan Text Amendment, what that entails? I, I know it's a pain. You guys are all very familiar with it. But if you could summarize it at a high level, other people listening who are just dropping in may not know what it's about. Anyone?
So Steve, is that something you can do briefly?
Sure, I'd be happy to do so. So the text amendment, what it does is it amends the medium-low density residential zone, RML, in a specific geographic location in the Basalt Creek area, which generally specific within that Basalt Creek area, area east of Boone's Ferry Road and south of Norwood Road. And so future developments would be allowed to construct detached single-family homes through a small lot conditional use subdivision process. A minimum of twenty percent of the units proposed would need to be, excuse me, attached single-family. In addition, for those developments, five percent of the gross land area would need to be devoted towards open space and/or tree preservation. In the case of tree preservation, that provision would satisfy certain requirements within the small lot subdivision code that require tree preservation from that specific type of development. And I think that's really it in a nutshell. Did I miss anything, Sean?
I don't think so.
I think that's a good summary. I appreciate it a lot. Thanks. So when I read about this, I was looking at a number that was ten units per acre. And that's a little confusing, because we're looking at this in, in this particular block of land, twenty-eight acres? Is that what we're looking at? Here?
If I may, Mayor?
Sure.
It's a, it's approximately, I think that it's closer to, to, in the fifty, or so fifty to sixty acre range total.
So it extends all the way down to that cleared area? This is a contiguous block of land, right?
Correct.
Okay. When, when we look at ten units per acre, if you're looking at, you say fifty acres, obviously there's land set aside for roads and driveways and things like that. And, and in this case, trees and some natural space, what does it really wind up being when you're done with the development and all these units are built? Is it, it can't possibly be ten units per acre? What is it then? Otherwise, we'd be looking at five hundred Otherwise, we'd be looking at 500 homes.
It's really highly dependent on a development proposal. I think ballpark, you're probably looking at somewhere around 20% of that 10, maybe less. It, it really, it really depends on how, on how much road you're providing and how much other kind of infrastructure type of things go into it.
Sure.
That's just a very, it's a very vague ballpark. I mean, it could be more, it could be less.
500 would be astronomical. As far as I'm concerned, it would be just incredible. And, and so I'm hoping that that's not what it is. And I hope we have some citizens have some kind of input to that total number when it gets going and we can reflect some kind of concern on the part of everyone here in the public, me and friends and relatives and people who live in the area that 10 units, 500 homes would be just completely ballistic. It would be unbelievable. Because it's not, it's not quite enough land in our opinion. The, the other thing is that if, if the builder is building to the bottom of the market, so to speak, he's looking for the most affordable homes, or at least the city council is, they want the most affordable homes we can possibly provide. That's been the message coming from the council in the meetings I've attended. And general.
Do we lose him?
Did I lose you guys?
No, I think we, I think we lost Mr. Cobb.
He is still connected, but yes, we did lose his audio.
Give him a couple, three seconds to come back, maybe.
Steve, it might also be helpful if we can talk about the, where the 10 units per acre came from in the first place.
Sure.
That that wasn't because I think that's useful for people to know, like that was not our perfect number that we pulled out of the hat.
Sure. I guess I'll give Mr. Cobb a moment to come back and then.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, that's great. I'm glad. I hope that's the case. The, the concern I've got is that the developer is looking for guarantees about what he can build. He needs to have some solid kind of constraints about, about, around what he can actually do from the city. And that makes plenty of sense. But I think the city and the citizens of Toowalton deserve some constraints about what it is they're going to build. If you're looking to build to the bottom of the market to, to build affordable housing, that means that the builder is going to be using the cheapest possible construction materials that code allows. And, you know, code allows it. So I'm not saying there's anything necessarily wrong with that. But that means the lowest lifespan for a roofing, it means the cheapest available siding material. It means the cheapest interior fixtures, carpeting, painting, flooring, cabinetry, electrical and plumbing fixtures. And these then become entry-level homes, of course, and entry-level homes have a high rate of turnover. They're called starter homes because, you know, young couples are looking to buy something that they can get into and, and not continually be spending money on apartments. Unfortunately, what I've seen, and we've all seen it, I think, is that starter homes almost always gradually trended over towards investor homes by investment companies who who simply put those homes up for rent. And my concern is that this, this complex right across Norwood Road with limited access is going to become a rental slump over time. I've, I've seen that happen. I've been, I've been here a while. I'm not young. And I've lived in the East Coast and in California and here. And I've seen that happen over and over again. It's really disappointing. And I'm, I'm just profoundly disappointed that we know we went from 15% common wall or multifamily unit to 20. And we're trying to build to the absolute bottom of the market. If you add on the HOA, which would be really kind of necessary in my opinion, these homes will be really rather expensive. And yet not something anybody's going to want to stay in long term. So that's, that's my concern about it. That's, that's it, I guess. That and just traffic, obviously, access to and from the area and traffic. The, the, the last thing, I've mentioned this before, but construction access. There really are a lot of trees there. There's many, many trees back there. Many of them are tiny, kind of small, they're scrub, some of them, but many, many of them are quite large, a lot of girth around the base. And you're going to be having some very large, very heavy logging trucks coming and going from that area. And if they they can't head up north into Toowalton, that would be a wreck. That would be a disaster. If school's in session, you've got 80-ton logging trucks heading down Boon's Ferry. I, I mean, Lord. So let's please try to put that constraint around this. I guess, I guess that's about it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Can you respond to that a little bit?
I'm going to ask Mr. Robinson if he wants to answer some of your concerns.
You mean it, sir?
There we go. Thank you, Mayor Mike Robinson, on behalf of the applicant. So a couple of comments for the council to consider. First of all, whether or without this text amendment, the density isn't being changed. The density is what it is. So that's not before the council tonight. And secondly, Mr. Cobb should be happy to know that, that the, one of the things that we suggested and the council wanted to see was that the application be a conditional use permit. We're happy with that. That requires public notice, a public hearing process. So the neighbors and indeed anyone that wants to can participate in that process and make whatever comments they want to, they're relevant to the approval criteria. Third, and I, I think my clients would want me to say this, much of what Mr. Cobb concluded with is, is just simply pure speculation. And I don't begrudge Mr. Mr. Cobb from saying, he's free to say whatever he wishes. But it's simply not true. What you have here are two reputable builders, one Portland-based, one with a long, the other with a long period of Portland experience. They're managed by, by Portland-based individuals who all have a long experience in Portland. Building housing that doesn't fare well in the market is, is counterproductive to them because they're here in the market. So I think what Mr. Cobb had to say, while he certainly can say it, it's not based on fact, and it's certainly not the way these two builders behave, both of which I've known for years. So I think the council should consider what's before them tonight, which is a quasi judicial text amendment, doesn't change the density. It will provide that what we do is a public process, so pure public transparency, which is, which is our preference as well. It provides an assurance of attached housing, much of it in the first phases. And it assures not only open space, but preservation of trees. So that's all I have. If council has questions of me or any of the other applicants team, we're happy to answer them.
All right. Counselors, any questions for the applicant or staff? All right. Seeing none. That would conclude the council question section of this hearing. Applicant, do you wish to submit final written argument before council enters into deliberations?
Mayor, the applicant's waived final written argument.
All right. Thank you. But at this point, I thought someone was saying that, at this point, council will move into deliberations on this PTA. Council Brooks.
I want to say that I, I am grateful for the shift that we've made. I want to also be really clear to the community that, you know, we've, we have goals around affordability, this particular goal. As far as deep affordability, that's not what, what this is. So I know it can be confusing. But I, I just want to be clear in the thinking of attainable versus deeply affordable. That conversation is happening, but not particularly with this this use of land. So I'm very happy that we've moved towards preserving trees, open spaces, and more diversity of housing types.
All right. Other comments, questions, motions, discussion? Counselor Reyes, did you have your hands up?
No, no, but I can't say a comment. I mean, I am in favor of, I like the, what we talked about. I think the open space, the keeping the homes attainable. It's always, obviously, I mentioned that earlier. And I think that you know, the maintaining the green space, I think it's really important to, in areas that kids can play, but you know, also multi-generational for, for older adults that are ready for the smaller home. So that's what I'm, I'm looking at.
I'll make a motion. So is this right? I move to for consideration of the Plan Text Amendment 200003, which would modify the low, the medium-low density residential zone.
I think the motion should be to approve the PTA, not to consider it.
To approve.
So we have a motion to approve Plan Text Amendment 20-003 as presented tonight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kellogg by a split second. So I have a motion as second to approve Plan Text Amendment 20-0003 as presented tonight. I believe this is first and second reading, Sean, or roll call?
Yes, it's just roll call for the Plan Text Amendment portion.
Okay. And then the ordinance is roll call. Okay. So let's start, do the roll call. Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Kellogg.
I.
Counselor Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
I.
And the mayor also votes I, so it's unanimous. So I don't have my gavel here. PTA 20-003 is approved. Right. So moving on to general business, I have consideration of ordinance number 1444-20, amending Toowalton Development Code, Chapter 41, relating to the medium-low density residential RML zone and creating new provisions.
So moved.
Are there any presentation from staff or anything, Sherilyn, or? Bridget's itchy on the.
Sean, was there, or Steve, I, I think we don't have to make a presentation. It's, it was all part of the original presentation.
Sure.
But this is, requires first and second reading by title only.
Right. All right, Bridget.
So moved. Do I have to say the whole thing?
I think Sean wouldn't like that.
All right. Okay, Sean. I move to approve ordinance number 144420, amending Toowalton Development Code, Chapter 41, relating to the medium-low density residential zone and creating new provisions by title only.
So you want a reading of ordinance number 1444?
I'm sorry.
First reading, correct?
First reading.
By title only?
Second.
All right. Does that satisfy everything, Sean?
That, that is great. Thank you.
All right. I have a motion as second for first reading of ordinance number 1444-20 by title only. Counselor Brooks.
I.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Kellogg.
I.
Counselor Morrison.
Yes.
President Grimes.
I.
And I also vote yes. Mr. Brady.
Thank you. Ordinance number 1444-20, an ordinance relating to zoning, amending Toowalton Development Code, Chapter 41, relating to the medium-low density residential RML zone and creating new provisions.
I'll make a motion for second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion as second for second reading of ordinance number 1444-20 by title only. Counselor Brooks.
I.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Kellogg.
I.
Counselor Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
I.
And the mayor votes I also. Sean.
Ordinance number 1444-20, an ordinance relating to zoning, amending Toowalton Development Code, Chapter 41, relating to the medium-low density residential RML zone and creating new provisions.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion as second to approve ordinance number 1444-20. Counselor Brooks.
I.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Kellogg.
I'm going to make a quick comment. I know it's a little unconventional, but I didn't get a chance to say it earlier. You know, a lot of residents are concerned about the future of housing in Toowalton. There's been state legislation that's going to change the face of our land use laws for a long time coming. And against that backdrop, we had a developer come in and made concessions that they didn't necessarily have to, to help us meet our policy goals. So before they get away, I just wanted to applaud them for coming in with a collaborative spirit. And with that, I will vote yes.
Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
I will double down on what Counselor Kellogg said, and I, I do think that this is a wonderful solution. And I am, I am pleased to take part, and I vote I also.
All right. In front of the mayor votes I, it is unanimous. So ordinance number 1444-20 is approved. All right. Steve's got a big smile on his face. So it's Mr. Robinson, understandably. All right. So moving on to items removed from consent, we had none. There are any council communications at the end of this meeting?
Real, real quick, Mayor, before all of our guests leave, I want to just triple down on what Counselor Kellogg said, and I appreciate the cooperation from everyone.
All right. Anyone else? Counselor Brooks.
Oh, I just wanted to, as far as council communications, I wanted to just mention because this weekend would have been the pumpkin regatta, and I realized, you know, that things are different this year because of COVID. And, but I just wanted to extend, you know, thoughts to the community around that and know that we will be back up and paddling when we're able to safely. And there is, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we're still doing a raffle through the Police Foundation, and you can go online to the Police Foundation. There's not going to be an actual duck this year, but there will be a duck raffle. So please support the community, Toowalton Community Police Foundation. I also did not mention I will be having our other water board this, coming up this week. And like was said in our earlier communications, just want to invite everyone to our community conversation around use of force and policing on October 14th. Information at the website. It's nice to see everybody. Oh, and happy Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day, depending on your perspective.
Anyone else? Counselor Kellogg.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take the opportunity, in case anyone was not aware, there's an election coming up on November 3rd. And I just wanted to encourage people that if you have not yet registered to vote, I, I don't know if you still can, I hope you still can, but if you cannot, then if you have registered, be sure to read your voter's pamphlet and make informed choices on your ballot. These choices that we make will affect our generations to come. Thanks.
All right. Anything else? I just have two quick things riffing on Counselor Brooks's comment. If the community conversations on police use of force is from 6:00 to 7:30 on Wednesday night, it's a Zoom meeting. Go to the city's website to find out more and where the link is. It will be simulcast in Spanish and English. And the second thing, I've been seeing bubbles in social media about fake voters' drop boxes. The vote to the, the Washington County Uh, the vote to the vote, the Washington County voter's Dropbox in front of the library is a real Dropbox. So if you prefer not to mail your ballot or you don't uh mail it in time, the Dropbox in front of the Toowalton Library is a Washington County authorized Dropbox. So feel free to use it. It's been repainted, it's been refurbished, it's nice and pretty, please use it once it's open. Sherilyn.
It is open, and that's also, if you live in Clackamas County, you can use that as well.
Thank you, yep, that, you can use any Dropbox at any Washington County location uh that you desire. They all pretty much look the same. Uh, most of them are associated with library locations uh or city hall locations. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second? I got a motion as second to adjourn, all in favor, just raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good evening, thank you for everyone attending, and again, Aquila, we're gonna miss you. Have a good evening.